Welcome, everybody, to the study session 9:25. We're here for a study session with rehabilitation with Wayne County with looking at our creek. And if everybody please stand, call for a bunch of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll call?
Certainly, Councilperson Bear?
Here.
Dupree?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salcedo is absent. Zor?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
And Mayor Higgins?
Here. Okay, we're here to hear from the Wayne County to talk about our creek. So if you'd step on up and you can take the meeting.
Just pull that microphone down so that you can, it bends, it wiggles. There you go. Thanks.
Is the little green light on?
Yes, yeah, I turned it off earlier.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for taking the time on a Monday night to come meet with us to hear the presentation on what we're going to do with the Ecorse Creek, what we have planned for the maintenance project. Myself, I'm Bill Becker, I'm with Spicer Group, we're the consulting firm for the Wayne County Drain Commissioner's Office. With me today, I have Amika Steele, the Wayne County Drain Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Good evening.
And Stacey Hissong with FSBR, she's the legal representation for Wayne County.
Welcome.
So I have it on the TV here, what we're going to go through is our PowerPoint presentation. So I mean, pretty informal, so if you guys have questions anytime, feel free to stop. This will be our fifth technical meeting for this, and this outnumbers the amount of participation we've had by 10, easily. So thank you all very much for coming. So yeah, kind of excited to finally give a presentation in front of multiple people. So like I said before, we're here for the maintenance project for the North Branch Ecorse Creek Drain. So we're kind of just going to give a big, a little overview of what this is going to entail, what the project is, and then we'll get more into specific for Lincoln Park itself. So Wayne County Executive Warren Evans directed a grant award of $10 million for the Wayne County through the ARPA funds for drain maintenance for the Ecorse Creek. Drain maintenance will include tree clearing, obstruction removal, sediment removal, and bank stabilization. The obstruction removal is typically, you see the dead fall and the branches and debris and stuff that are collected in the drain, usually a big log had fallen in and collects. So we're going to clean that up. What is a county drain? So a county drain must be established under the drain code. So not all drains and ditches and watercourses you see are under the jurisdiction of the Wayne County Drain Commissioner. You know, roadside ditches are typically under the DPS roads, or if it's a municipality road, it'd be under their jurisdiction. So different structure that uses to convey the stormwater and the rainwater are pipes, creek streams, ditches, detention ponds, typical, you know, road crossings, drive crossings, and the open channels that you see throughout. What is drainage district? So every county drain has an established drainage district. That drainage district is the area that contributes stormwater to the drain. So think of it as a bathtub, and the edges of that bathtub are the edges of the drainage district boundary. So all water that hits that boundary in makes its way to the drain. And the drainage district itself serves as the special assessment district, so all lands inside of that contribute the cost to any maintenance that occurs on the drain. So that, I mean, I'll go through who all those people are. So one more facts on the Ecorse Creek. It was established as a county drain in 1861. It's over 16 miles and it outlets to the Detroit River. That outlet to the Detroit River is something we'll cover a little later that's important to this portion of the project in Lincoln Park. So here's kind of an overview map. It's a little tough to see. In the bottom right-hand corner of the TV, you see it says Ecorse Lincoln Park, that's the outlet to Detroit River. That's what's considered the, that's what is the point of beginning. And flow goes from the left side to the right side of the map here, following the black dash line where it will start, it's right around Council Point Park, goes north and westerly through Ecorse, Anna Park, Melvindale, Dearborn Heights, Romulus, and the other municipalities shown in this area are included in that drainage district, which we'll see coming up here next. So like I said, all of the lands that are within that drainage district includes about 52,000 parcels, 19,000 acres, and these are all the entities that make up that drainage district. MBOT, Wayne County, the railroads, the landowners, and all the municipalities within. So here's a, here's a map of that drainage district boundary. So now the dash black line is that boundary, the edge of the bathtub, and the blue line will be the center line of the drain. So all the waters that hit on that black line inside of it make its way into the North Branch Ecorse Creek drain. So the goals for this maintenance project are to remove obstructions from the drain. And in doing so, we're going to need to improve the access to do this maintenance and to do any future maintenance on the, on the Ecorse Creek. So that would mean on both sides of the top of banks, we're going to try to establish a maintenance lane that is roughly 15 feet off the top of banks so that any future equipment, excavators can get through both sides of the bank, because having equipment to be able to reach from one side to the other, it's pretty large equipment. I mean, those are long reaches, especially down here in the outlet, you know. So maintenance activities along each drain in each city, we're trying to do our best, what we're doing here today, we're just communicating with all stakeholders and coordinating with community partners. So in those 16 miles of drain, roughly 900 parcels traverse the Ecorse Creek, which would mean that it runs through portions of part of or all of somebody's property. So for the maintenance project, we divided into 12 reaches. This is going to allow us to design a portion of like similar characteristics, bid it out, and as, and send it out to construction, and continue to do the design, the bid, construction all the way throughout 12 reaches. Also, that allows multiple contractors to work, more specialized contractors in certain areas. So like in, in Reach One that we're talking down here in Ecorse Creek in Lincoln Park, that's going to be a majority of just clearing, obstruction removal, and clear that maintenance So here's a little map of the different color reaches. Reach One being the darker greenish-blue on the right side of the map there, that's City of Ecorse and Lincoln Park, and then also Lincoln Park will be a part of Reach Two. So Reach One is going to end, it's a better map, better map here, is going to end the railroad that's just upstream of I-75, that's where Reach One is going to end. So the project that we're talking about today, that we're going to bid out first, is going to start at the point of beginning, which is at Council Point Park, and it'll end at the railroad, just up, just the northwest early of 75. So the maintenance activities that are going to be throughout this project, specifically in Reach One, is tree clearing and obstruction removal. So here's kind of a picture of, this was a, as you can see in the backdrop of the photo there, how heavy brush and wooded that is. So this is an area that was extremely brushy and woody that we cleared the maintenance lane. We're hoping to have something like this on both sides. You know, we understand that they're going to be in obstacles, encroachments, that we can't do that, so we're already trying to plan ahead and take care of all that stuff as much as we can before the project even starts. So here's just kind of an idea, it's kind of, it has a double boundary of the green line on that Reach One is just, you're just saying we want to work on both sides of that, of that drain center line. So parcels in Lincoln Park along the drain, there's 105 parcels, 29 city of Lincoln Park, one City of Ecorse, and I believe that's just because it's from the reestablished center of the drain, it still has an old tax, prefix tax code. It's a Lincoln, it's a Lincoln Park parcel, but it's just the way that it's tax coded. Seven state properties, 10 county properties, 32 commercial, and 26 residential. Just for everybody's knowledge, last Friday, we had, we held here in this room, the residential presentation, we had one landowner show up, and that's the first landowner out of the five meetings we've had so far. So we've got one landowner's input, but to expand on that, we are going to reach out to every landowner that has an encroachment, which is a, you know, we'll get into is, which is going to be a fence, a building, landscaping, structures, or walking or driving surface are within that maintenance lane we want to establish. So we're going to contact and reach out, have site visits with anybody that needs it to walk their property and show them a little bit, so from here to here is probably what the fence is going to have to go away, or, you know, this landscaping, it's going to be really tough working around it, we're going to have to remove it. Landowners may remove fences prior to construction, this is preferred. If not, the contractor will remove fences when performing the work on your property. Removed fences will be placed outside of the work area on your property. If the conversations with the landowner before is, it's, they don't want the fence back, it's in poor condition, contractor's going to haul it away. Fences will not be reinstalled by the contractor. Landowners may reinstall the fence after the, after construction is completed, but with the understanding that any future maintenance that comes through, that fence will be have to removed again at their cost. So the same goes for landscaping in the drain easement. We're going to recommend landowners, encourage them to remove it themselves, contractor will, contractor won't put it back, and if they want to put it back afterwards, just so they're aware that it'll be their cost that is removed again.
Let's, let's spend a second real quick, and I'll, you can tell you two, so this drain, established since the Civil War, has drain easements, existing drain easements on both sides, and so people over the years didn't realize there was a drain easement or no work had taken place, so they put stuff there, and it's accumulated for a very long time. And so, but we still have a valid and legal drain easement, and so we need to reclaim that in order to, to do this project.
Will that include docks and such?
I'm looking at you, Bill.
Yeah, I'm.
Do we, do we, do you have a handle on how many parcels that involves?
With docks?
Yes.
I personally haven't seen any, like dock docks, that are in this stretch. I've seen some pallets that people sit and fish off of. Do you know roughly where those, where the docks are?
Lee Park and wind at the...
Are they, are they north of 75?
The side of 75?
South.
There's at least, at least a couple of them that I know of.
Okay. Look, I'll tell you, the contractor's going to pull it out and set it on the bank for them. And I mean, that is a flow obstruction that, to the, to the drain, and I, I believe there's a permitting process to have the, no?
No.
Okay.
First of all, it requires a permit from Eagle.
To have that.
Correct.
And then, a state permit, and then because this is actually public infrastructure, I mean, it looks like a river and it is a creek, but it's also public infrastructure and a drain, and we can't have docks out there. And I'm sure Eagle did not grant any permits to put any docks out there.
Yeah.
We would have received notice from Eagle, if they get any permits such as that, they definitely would have notified us. It's just like, I, that was the first time I heard of any docks at all.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing them either. To elaborate a little more on the Eagles' portion of this, or the relationship to this project, so we are under a restriction because the Detroit River has an ordinary high watermark that basically goes from the Detroit River to 75. So any work technically under that ordinary high watermark would take an Eagle permit, which the, our McCorr permit as well. So we aren't going to do any work below that ordinary high watermark. So I mean, we are going to remove obstructions that are sitting in the county drain obstructing the flow, but we're not going to remove any sediment through this reach because of that.
Mr. Becker, if I could ask you, on Friday, you mentioned that mailings had already gone out to...
Correct.
To the residents, right?
Cards and letters.
Yeah, we sent a postcard to feel everybody out, let them know that the letter was coming afterwards. Don't throw it away, the letter's coming to invite everybody, well, we sent a meeting to everybody that traversed the drain, that the project is going to happen. We sent a follow-up letter to every landowner in Reach One, inviting them to the meetings that we've had for Ecorse and Lincoln Park. On those letters themselves, I'll get into a little more detail. Just to get through this portion of it, sorry, the buildings in the drain easements, you guys probably have the most famous photos so far that we've seen on the Ecorse Creek of buildings that are basically in the drain. I think everybody knows, hear what that is, so we're going to coordinate with those proper, property owners on an individual basis. Access may need to be granted to work around these buildings. As part of this project, we don't have the desire for the legal battle to go through and to have all of these buildings removed. The Drain Office is going to work with these landowners, we're going to work around them if we need to, acts, or we're going to ask for granted access to work around into their private property. That also might include, we're going to work with them for an encroachment agreements that they have for those buildings that are going to stay within that drain easement. So we're going to basically require those landowners to sign an encroachment agreement.
How many feet on each side are you, is going to be the lane?
For, for the encroachment agreements in the, we don't have a set width yet.
For maintenance.
For the maintenance lane, 15 foot off top of bank. We need, we need enough area to get a excavator through top of bank. So that's what we're requiring for this and for future maintenance.
So Mr. Becker, if I could back up a little bit to the mailings?
Yeah.
The information that was sent to the residents affected, are they this in-depth with the information? You know, as far as...
That, that, that letter points everybody to the website that has all of this information.
Correct.
And we've had meetings since then that were, I mean, we're continually going to evolve that website, it's going to, we're going to start putting some webinars up there, which are basically a version of this presentation that you are seeing, so all the residents can see this presentation and get the same information that we're giving everybody. If they don't make it, or if we don't call you, like, I'm not going to have this presentation with me to feel when I meet with them, everybody's going to be able to be directed to that website that has all this information.
Okay.
Yeah, I was also going to add, so the first item that went out was a postcard that basically said, you know, in a few weeks, you're going to get a letter with information about a survey. So the second mailing that went out was a letter, a frequently asked questions, a survey, and as the residents would go through that survey, they could see all of the questions that were asked about encroachment, landscaping, fencing, so that they'd have an idea of, you know, the type of information that we're trying to, that we have, but we're trying to verify, obviously, with each landowner. Then they also received an additional mailing about the public meetings. So, and again, every mailer always had the website, we have a dedicated website just for this project, independent of the county website, because we understand, you know, you got to click 10 times before you get into something that can be frustrating. So literally, there's a dedicated project website, phone number, email, and we have had residents who have responded thus far and called in, you know, to ask questions or responded to the survey. We tried to make that as convenient as possible electronically, and then also, like I said, a phone number. There were some residents who preferred to provide that information by phone.
But to further answer your question, so there's going to be, like, three categories of property owners. One, where we're going through their property, we let them know, but there's not fencing or major landscaping, that's a problem. So they'll see us. We've let them know a couple times, they'll see us, but we're not going to knock on their doors again. Then there's going to be, we have fences to deal with, you have landscaping, you might need to move a portable shed, somebody's going to be, we're going to call them again, we're going to knock on the door, we have an opportunity on the website where you can schedule a meeting with Bill, he'll come out, we're going to talk to those people. Situations like this, that's the next step.
Okay.
This is something that can't be worked around easily, and we need an agreement, and we need a more formal meeting for there, and so we will track all of these folks down too. And so it's, that's, you know, very time-consuming, any help you have with the property owners involved and making sure they contact us will be helpful to try to do that, but we, it will be multiple attempts if there's something that needs to be moved.
Thank you.
Driving, walking, surfaces, parking lots, curb and gutter, sidewalk, paths, the park, stuff like that, parking lots, this is the upstream end. We are going to work around these as much as possible. We'll, we'll take, you know, as the Drain Office, we always take pre-construction videos, we'll make sure everything that's out there is the way that we saw when we came into the property, but in this project, there is no plan to repair at this time those, those things if, you know, if it gets cracked, if it, you know, we drive over it.
In the drainage.
In the drainage. So damages to surfaces may occur, meetings may take place to discuss alternative drain access to minimize this. So I know on this specific, this photo right here, which is just downstream of 75, the other side of the ditch is a grass field. So we'll do our best to work from that side and not have to worry about things like this, driving on the surfaces, you know, that's the stuff that we'll work through as much and as best as we can. So this is a, this is what we're telling all the landowners, we highly recommend, encourage you to move the fences prior to construction, that fences, landscaping, portable sheds that you can move, the contractor in the drainage district will not be liable for any damages with that drainage during the construction.
Question?
Yeah.
Some people have fences that aren't as close to the creek as others, so if it's right on the border of 15 feet, are we removing it, are we leaving it?
We're not removing anything that, if we can get around it, we're going to get around it. If we don't have to move it, we're not going to move it. Yeah, we want to minimize that impact as much as possible to make this a good project for everybody. So yes.
Contractors don't like to get off their excavator if they can help it, and so if they can work around it, they're going to do it.
Good, thank you.
So this is the QR code, this kind of has the, the survey that we talked about before. This is, we had the initial mail, postcard, mailed the letter regarding the maintenance project with the survey link. So that survey information, we want it to be collected as the property owner's contact information, email, phone number, the preferable way to contact them, any encroachment information that they know about. We've done our own sidewalks inspections, we kind of know what's coming up, what's, what would be in the way as best we could. We didn't jump fences everybody's backyard, as best that we could look and see from one side or the other. We did that already, so we kind of have an idea of who we reach out to, who to contact, but this gives us, them the opportunity to let us know what they, you know, what their concerns are when we come through, and then what they use that property for. So here is the website, there'll be a link on the Wayne County Department of Public Services page. We talked last, last Friday with Mayor Mike about having a link on your website to, you know, direct any residents to this website to, for any questions. We have a phone number, we have an email.
Will you be providing us with a copy of that information, or no?
I can email everybody that was invited to this meeting, a copy of this presentation if you'd like.
Thank you very much, yes.
I have a question.
Yes?
Parcels that, that come up to the creek, are there, the property lines, they end at this easement?
It, it is, as Laura can attest, it is, it is, it is different per, per property. So it's not the property line. So technically, the drainage district doesn't own any of that property. We have an easement to convey water, and that's, it's the landowners' properties, and some of those properties are to, are described to the center line of the drain. And over time, that, you know, that changes a little bit. I did do a little research, and there are parcels that do say that, there are parcels that don't say that. They give a physical distance from what would be their plat line or the center of the road to, you know, 200 feet back, and that, you know, that has changed, and that's just the way that it is. So when it comes to the, their property boundary, that's, you know, kind of here or there when it comes to what is going to be the easement to do.
The creek was set up with this easement in there as a drain.
Correct.
So they kind of have to understand that that's for maintenance and the purpose of it being a drain, that, okay, all right.
It's hard not to think of it that way, or to think of it that way, because it's not like sanitary or water, it's...
Right, right, but yeah, it's got to go somewhere, so this is what, for a long time, it's been like that. Okay, thank you.
And I would remind people at home that the easement is just like in your most people's backyard, there's an easement so that the electric company can get back, it's the same thing, it's exactly the same thing, so that they can get back in there, do maintenance, get what needs to be done. It's not so that they can come in and move into your property, it's so that they can do their maintenance and move on.
Correct. So next steps throughout Reach One, we're going to, we are now in the process of contacting landowners to have onsite meetings for those landowners and their properties that are going to be impacted, you know, typically like those encroachments. But if anybody wishes us to come out there just so they can have some more questions, we're going to be willing to do that. So finalizing the plans and the specifications to get this out to bid, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that'll, and then that bid process will probably take up to roughly four weeks. So we're thinking the construction season on this will be winter, which is actually ideal for us, because less disturbed ground if it's frozen. And then leaf off, it'll be less, less disturbance when it comes to that. So in saying that, though, everything's going to be hauled away. We're not leaving anything within that right-of-way, you know, logs chopped to a certain distance length. Everything that we collect, pull out of the obstructions that we clear off the banks and off, off the ditch banks, and in that right-of-way is going to be hauled away.
Are you, you're talking about creek cleanup? I'm late, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about the North Branch Ecorse Creek Maintenance Project.
Where, where are you starting at?
At the point of beginning, at Council Point Park and the Detroit River.
A council park?
Yep.
And then you're working...
Upstream to the end of, we have it in phases, so, in 12 different reaches, Reach One will end just upstream of 75 at the Breville Track.
So think of it like a clean-up on steroids, because it's much more than just picking some stuff up, it's, it's a lot.
I have another question, because you're saying you're starting at Council Point Park. If you've taken that drive, you know where the Harrison Bridge, but before you get to Harrison Bridge, which is not probably Council Point Park, but there is a tree there that is...
The other side of it.
So, yeah, so that's why I'm asking, is that, will that be?
If it's within the established point of beginning of the Ecorse Creek, then we can take it out, because if it's not, it's out of our jurisdiction. So I'll have to, I guess I have a follow-up question.
Because that's a solid blockage there, so that's a concern, several citizens have called and asked me to ask that question tonight.
I will definitely look at that.
Yeah, follow-up question I was going to ask, do you have any way to confirm that there will be good flow from where you're starting at at Lincoln Park to where it discharges into the Detroit River? Because it seems like the whole point of this is to open it up where we'll get water, we'll get water flow where we don't have it. But like you said, the Harrison Bridge, is, will that be a choke point?
So what, there has to be expectations when it comes to this project. We have a straw that has a lot of water. When we get done, that straw's going to be cleared. We are also, like I was saying earlier, the Detroit River has a lot of, the ordinary high water, the Detroit River is upstream into the Ecorse Creek. So that water affects the amount of flow that can get through and out of Detroit River and out into the lake.
So it backs up into the Ecorse Creek, right?
By the distance.
So to, in all honesty, it is going to, the flow will go down, there's a rise, it'll come down faster, because we're removing the obstructions that reduce the flow.
Okay, what you've already done is, I'm familiar with all them other ones, but the one I'm basically concerned about is the Austin Street Bridge. Once you get to the Austin Street Bridge, if you're not going to touch, touch that, then there's no sense in doing anything, because you go to the left side, to the left side of the bridge is the hospital, and the tree growth in there, that the trees have fallen, and it is, it's obstructed. And if you go onto the right side, I don't know if you guys are the guys who went in here and cleaned it up or not, but whoever went in there and cleaned it up, took some trees out, and we're supposed to clean it up, and obviously, somebody hasn't looked at it, because they just dumped them there on the right, on the left side and on the right side. And if you were to look over the bridge, on the right side, you'll see nothing but, probably from here to there, nothing but a great big mud, big, just pile of mud. The water's not flowing at all. I am right at, at that creek.
I'm not extremely familiar where Austin Street Bridge is. The, so this project is, we're going to remove the obstructions throughout the entire Ecorse Creek. Now, you may be talking about a, a maintenance obstruction removal in a certain spot, but there has been no earth excavation done by the Drain Commissioner's Office.
Well, somebody was down there that did it, that, that, I mean, they actually went in there on the, both sides of the creek and left what is there, if you would see it.
Was there, was there a large tree obstruction there that they just pulled out, or they also dug?
It was a tree obstruction, it was a large tree obstruction to get to the creek, to get the stuff out of the creek on both sides.
Do you know when, when was, when that was done?
Uh, within the last, I'll say, two months.
Okay, yeah, well, we have not started a project yet, but I definitely want to go back.
We do have ongoing maintenance projects when there's large law drills, we have a, we have a pre-qualified contractor that moves.
But not those particular projects. The most particular projects.
I followed the project through, when the guys first came there from whatever company they, and they walked the creek from airport all the way down into, through, the Southfield Bridge, and then they canoeed the rest into Windon, where it's fairly clear.
Are you, they just doing a visual inspection survey? Because the only people I know that did the canoeing was the Ecorse, the Friends of the Detroit River, the Ecorse Creek Committee.
Nope, it was somebody that did, what's the name of the company? Begins with a W. The one that, all I can tell you is most of the city workers went to work for that company after they retired from Lincoln Park.
Way trims, they only end?
Yes, yes, they were the guys that walked it, because they parked the trucks down there at that particular bridge.
We do not have way trim under contract for North Branch Ecorse Creek, so I'm just curious if they were working in some other capacity, but we can...
Does Lincoln Park have them?
No. No, they don't work for Lincoln Park.
Sir, did you receive a letter saying that they were going to clean up the, and receive the survey? You're, you're on the quick, correct?
I'm right there. I'm watching them do it. Nobody said no.
No, did you get a letter from Wayne County about meetings this week?
Yes, this one I did. But I didn't receive nothing about that.
Yeah, because that wasn't performed by the office.
Right, yes, right.
I'll gladly talk afterwards and get specifically where you're talking and come look at it with you.
It's behind the old hospitals where he's talking about.
Is that the, is that, is that one street downstream of Papales Drive? Is that awesome?
Yes.
Is that awesome? It's double guardrails, it's, yes, that area, yes. I was there, I was there, the first time I talked to John on the phone was that when I walked it there, and I didn't see any excavation at that point, that was probably a couple months ago-ish. Yeah, there hasn't been any, to my knowledge. The only work that I am aware of is just, just downstream of Southfield Freeway, where we had a maintenance remove project by a pre-qualified contractor, where they just removed two large log jams on each side of the road. And that's the only maintenance that, that we are aware of, and that is two streets, two streets downstream of Southfield Freeway.
That's what they did on Austin Street Bridge.
Okay.
But they left it now that there's just black mud.
Is Austin Street Bridge, is that where the road is very, very tight to the bridge as well, where it comes around there and heads northwesterly? No, there's not that road just to the south of the ditch?
Austin Street is, it runs next to the old Outer Drive Hospital and goes out to Outer Drive. It's, it's effectively a block east of Fort Street. It parallels Fort Street.
Yeah, it's, and it's pretty much blocked off.
Yeah.
Well, blocked off.
Black.
Oh, yeah.
That street.
Outer Drive.
We come down from, from Fort Street, you pick up Fort Street there, you'll just come around the bend line and then come right there.
Excuse me, Chair, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Thank you for your time here today. When was the last time this was done, if you don't mind me asking that question?
When, so it, ongoing maintenance of like, removing of those obstructions and stuff like that, where a landowner will call in a service request, the drains, the drains crew will go out there and inspect it, they have a pre-qualified contractor that'll just remove log jams here and there, but as a, as a comprehensive project?
It's been years, honestly. So, and that's one of the things, you know, as we've been having these public meetings, under the Michigan Drain Code, you are limited to $5,000 per mile of drain annually. So that's, you know, for the entire drain. So pretty much, based on that budget, it pretty much reduces us down to responding to service requests. In order to do a larger scale project, it requires landowners or municipality within the Drainage District to petition. So the estimated cost, some of you may be familiar that there was, there's been like an Army Corps study that had been pending for 30 years, because the estimated cost for a very large project along the North Branch Ecorse Creek in 2008 was in the range of close to $300 million. So when we explained earlier about the Drainage District, ordinarily, those costs would be borne solely by the landowners and the municipalities in the Drainage District. Sometimes people think like there's this big pot of money, you know, sitting around like countywide, it doesn't work that way. Each Drainage District bears the cost. So the county had partnered with the Army Corps to see if the Army Corps would find a federal interest in a larger project. The Army Corps, a few, a couple of years ago, declined to find a federal interest in a larger project. So obviously, that was one of the reasons why the county executive wanted to allocate some of the county's upper dollars to do a project. So when it becomes feasible to do the larger scale project, this type of work would have to be done anyway in anticipation of that. But our cost estimates now, I mean, was, like I said, close to $300 million, $2,000, and our engineers are saying it could be close to $600 million now. And that is a significant cost. We are definitely advocating for state and federal funding for, because quite honestly, I mean, even if you could bond for this, you can get a sense of what that is like on people's tax bills.
I have a couple of follow-up questions, thank you. So to be more specific, what I'm concerned about is if someone moved into their home 15 years ago, and there's a fence back there, or there's some other stuff that was there when they bought the house, and they can't afford to move it, who's going to help them with that cost?
We are going, but as we mentioned, we're asking the landowners to move it, otherwise the contractor will move it.
With a, with a price?
No, no, with a price to them. We will, we will move it out of the, out of the drainage.
They just won't put it back?
We will not put it back. And we will make sure, based on the comments we received on Friday, to make sure landowners know to first contact the city building department before they just go and put the fence back up, because we understand in some cases, they may have put it up without pulling a permit.
I know, I came and let you guys, I have a copy of your presentation, it would have been helpful for us too, but you will provide that in the future, right? Okay, last question. I've, I was first, I was, I scaled on that creek years ago, I've done a lot of activity. I saw a guy try to jump the creek one time on a bike. Anyway, I'm just wondering why, why this wasn't done in the past, and why is it all coming to fruition now? And then that's my last question, because...
That was the lead-in slide was, is we were allotted money from Executive Warren Evans, 10 million upper funds to be able to do some work. So they've allocated that 10 million of upper funds to do a maintenance project.
So under the Drain Code, it's, is there any one of those weird situations? Because a full petition project is a half a billion dollars, but the only other option outside of that without some grant money is $85,000 a year, which is spent hauling individual trees, because it's 17 miles long. So there's no happy medium spot to just do a good cleanup unless we find grant money, like we found from Grant Wayne.
Thank you.
We've been talking about this for, I've been in the same property where I'm at for 54 years. Now, I happen to, there happens to be, the creek is here, and then there's an empty lot. And we went through, I don't care what you want to call it, a game with that lot. To buy that lot, you couldn't buy that lot because it was in flood plan stage. And anybody that lived on my street, which by the way, there's only seven houses now, on my street paid this ridiculous flood plan stage. So when the land went up for, for the sale, I was able to buy 25 feet, so I could move my fence. So my, my yard butts right up to the yard next to me, and you couldn't buy it because the county had it tied up, and then it went in flood plan stage, and I don't know if the city owns it now, but in the 54 years I've been there, twice, twice, I don't know, once they dredged the creek at that bridge in, in the time I've been there. And the most of the other time, it was all done by, what do we call, the creek cleanup that was done by Gloria Sheemaster. The county had nothing to do with it.
Okay, I'm going to ask people from the audience, if you please, hold the questions until you can use the microphone, because people at home can't hear you. So the people at home are going to be wondering what's that guy saying. So let's wait till the end and...
Chair, you have two more questions.
Absolutely, go ahead.
About a year and a half ago, Mr. Kazoo and I walked down the creek, and he pointed out the drains to me, and I'm just wondering with, once this is all removed and everything's flowing like it should, how is that drain, how are the drains going to handle more flow?
So that has been a growing concern with the county drains that we have, is the amount of rain that we're getting at short periods of times.
At that time, that drain was not big enough to handle a big event with it like it is now. So if it's opened up, how is it going to handle a big rainy event?
So for example, I mean, and this is really to set expectations, you know...
Hey, can I ask you to walk up to the microphone, please? Because again, we're, the people at home want to hear.
Okay. Good evening, Almika Steele, Wayne County Drain Commissioner. So that's a great question about the extreme rainfall events that southeast Michigan is experiencing. And just to give an example, use some examples, you know, towards the end of August, there was an extreme rainfall event in Wayne County. We had areas of the county that received up to seven inches of rain within a few hours, and there was a declared disaster, a disaster declaration for Wayne County. We even had some communities that were hit with tornadoes. The short answer is that there is no infrastructure that will handle seven inches of rain within a few hours. They, it just simply is not the case. So what we're doing here is, as we mentioned, we're doing a clean out that will help, but I don't, certainly want to make sure that the expectation is not that, you know, if there were another seven inch rainfall within a couple of hours, that that was a literal natural disaster, that somehow, you know, the project here would be able to handle that kind of rainfall.
I'm not talking about a seven inch rainfall, I'm talking about our rainfalls are bigger on average than they were 100 years ago, when this was set up for that. So even a one or two inch rainfall, which is common, are we going to be able to handle that with what you're doing?
The water, and I'll, I'll let our engineer talk a little bit more to it, but I mean, the idea is that the water will be able to flow more, but again, remember we talked about there are certain conditions, you know, like the Detroit River. I mean, so there are some conditions that we cannot control, but we certainly are trying to improve and do the best that we can in terms of the clean out. There absolutely, for this drain, is going to have to be a continuing conversation about a larger project, because you're absolutely right, a lot of the drains, such as this one and many others, were built at a time for a particular purpose, mainly agrarian, right? I mean, and now we know that things are built out. Also, for decades and years, there was no stormwater management, you know, when, when there was construction going on. We have those things in place now, but they weren't in place many, many years ago. So now that the Army Corps has said no to a federal interest in a larger project, we have been having some stakeholder meetings with the municipalities within the Drainage District. There will come a time where there'll have to be some conversations about what some of those alternatives look like, while we're still pursuing, hopefully, to get some state or federal funding for a larger project.
Just to kind of elaborate more on the question on, will it, so the maintenance project we're doing is just to clear any obstructions that we have now, and to produce a maintenance lane for future work, if we ever do a larger scale project. You know, it's very, it's very common, that's the practice now, that to develop new ways of inline storage or offline storage for these larger rain events, because realistically, that's the only way that's going to help this a little bit, with the amount of water that we are getting. But you think how big the trapezoid of the drain is now, that how bigger, how much bigger that has to be to be able to hold all that water, to keep it in the bank? So, I mean, it is part of the design criteria to think of ways to help that in the key points where they are having the most issues. But that would be a project down the road, and that does not include it in what we were talking about today.
And the second part is, I know that they were doing the work on the other side of Southfield on the creek, and they were doing some dredging down there, is that what it was?
The only work that we're aware of is they were moving log jam obstructions, which is just, just to help it further.
Down there.
And that's probably just from staining water from those obstructions. So as, as I...
That's something we can look forward to, skidding again?
So that, hopefully, when this is, when we're done, we come through with this maintenance project, that, that, those trees in that, those dead trees around the banks or in that maintenance lane, aren't there anymore, that they're not going to fall in and cause those obstructions. But when we go, people, trash ends up there. There's shopping carts, there's tons of things that are in there. When they end up there, we'll now have a maintenance lane to be able to remove those things quicker.
That was very unpleasant. Very, very unpleasant, so, thank you.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Once it's, once everything's removed, will you have, like a once a year, where you'll come through those lanes and make sure that everything's maintained?
There isn't a, there isn't a maintenance plan for all the drains of Wayne County. That's kind of where we have to reach out of, if you see it, please issue it to the Wayne County Service Request System. The drains crew are very responsive, getting out to landowners and seeing those areas, and we do our best to, if they have the ability to remove it, it'll be removed then, or a pre-qualified contractor will do that. But all of that work has to be done within that maintenance allowance on every county drain, more specifically this kind of drain, which is $5,000 per mile. You know, Ecorse has, you know, more miles, but that's still 16 miles of removing those obstructions, that money goes very, very fast. And that's all that we're legally allowed to do under the maintenance. Then we need resolutions from the municipalities to be able to exceed that maintenance allowance to do more work.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. That was, that's the end of our presentation for the...
Same presentation, everybody else is...
Lake of Park today.
Is there anybody from the audience who has any other questions? Anybody else have any else to say?
Yeah, I have another...
Let's keep on up.
I've been looking at the different ones, and it seems that over on, let's take another one, it's the creek, Allen Road. Everybody familiar with Allen Road, right across the street from the bowling alley?
Thunder Bowl.
They had some very, very heavy equipment over there for a matter of months cleaning that out. They also had some very, very heavy equipment down by the, let's go down to Trenton, down through there, Allen Road, where that bridge was closed for probably three months. And if you look at both those bridges, if we get our Southfield Bridge to look anything like those bridges, we've done something. If we get the Austin Street Bridge to look anything like that, those bridges, they're both on Allen Road. If you take Allen Road in Allen Park, across from the bowling alley, you can look at the bridge. It's brand new. It's just opened within the past couple of months. And the only time this creek ever got cleaned out that I know of is when we had creek cleanup, and that was once a year. We haven't had that in a number of years. Now, where I live, the particular house that I live in, she's talking about flood, I had six feet of water in my basement. And you know what they did for me? You see it, nothing. And the mayor was standing right across, not you, but the mayor was standing right across the street. I had, oh, what do you call them, people from the government there?
FEMA.
FEMA, and, and the other ones there, and we trashed everything in, in our basement. Furnace, washer dryer, the whole shot, and got no help. I know, you guys get kind of, kind of tired of hearing it, but that area gets hit bad, and it's only a matter of really cleaning very little out, and the people that used to come from the city county, now they only have two people. One girl's in charge, and they drive down there and look at the creek anymore and look, and they just, like I say, they just got, if you were to look on either side of the bridge, you can see where they came in there and took stuff out. I do not know who it was. But that's, those other two bridges really look nice. If our two bridges would look like that, we're in, in good shape. Thank you.
I was told in an earlier meeting, in a DCC meeting, I believe, that MDOT's going to help out with, under some of the bridges, is that still true?
I am not certain of MDOT's plans through Lincoln Park. I do know that they have ongoing 94 projects. I don't know if that's specifically where you're talking, but as for, for this project, we won't, besides obstructions, we're not cleaning out like sediment from the drain bottom under those... bottom under those, through those crossings. But when it comes to log jams that are backed up to them, or, or stuck at the upstream end, that was usually how it happens, those will be removed as part of this. So we're gonna remove those obstructions and those log jams and debris from those crossings. But as for MDOT projects, I'm not aware of MDOT projects that are cleaning out underneath their bridges.
We may be working with MDOT farther upstream to clean it out, and they'll help pay for it, but not in this section.
Any other questions from the council? In that case, I will call for adjournment.
So move.
All right.
Our department head, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we have a department head, I was... Mr. Kazoo from the DPS?
Good evening, everyone. Going back to, uh, the planning stage with MDOT for the Fort Tree Bridge, they're supposed to be cleaning out sediment buildup, which, that particular bridge had one of the cross-sectional box covers, was probably three quarters full, which you don't get the full characteristic, flow characteristics with that happening, and it was just sediment that had built up. They're supposed to be cleaning that out, and that wouldn't be adjusting the creek bottom. Now, a question to you, and maybe I misunderstood someplace, the sediment buildup on some of the bridges going through Lincoln Park, and let's use Austin, will that be removed?
If it's, if it's below that ordinary high watermark, no. And that ordinary high watermark pushes past 75, so...
Not having, uh, the sediment that's built up, up and over that, uh, water level?
If there's sediment above the ordinary high watermark, we will remove it as part of this project. From the, from the data that we have, it's very minimal to any, from the established ordinary high watermark they have for the Detroit River.
And I would probably say that I haven't, I haven't seen that done.
Yeah.
Because what I've seen of some of the buildup has been quite significant, where it's, it's greater than the flow characteristics of the culverts and/or the bridge opening.
The problem is, in order to...
Excuse me, could, could we please get to the microphone? Because there's gonna be people at home wanting to know. Let me get out of your way.
No, we'll, we'll keep you here, 'cause you're gonna have more questions. The buildup, so what we talked about at the beginning is, we recognize that there's sediment buildup there, but throughout this section, it would require an Army Corps permit to try to remove that sediment buildup, and so we can't even do simple maintenance, um, without, without a federal permit, to be able to remove that sediment in the drain. And so that's why we're not doing it. It takes a, a period of months and months and months to be able to get that type of permit.
Then let me ask this.
And, uh, have we come back up here?
Maybe I had a misunderstanding. I thought we, we could not go below the original contour of the 1860, 1890 contour of the, uh, I'm gonna call it river.
Yep.
And the buildings I see are greater than that.
Right, and so we're talking about two different things. So under Part 301 for a state permit, it's exempt to clean sediment out in the drain up to that 1890 mark, but...
But, and with that being the case, well, my question is, to clean it out to that original contour?
You, you didn't, you gotta remember my but. But, you're exempt under 301, but, the federal, when you come, the Detroit River ordinary high mark is what Bill's talking about. So remember we said it back flows into the East Coast Creek?
Yes.
Up to the Detroit River ordinary high watermark, you can't clean it out up to that 890 without a federal permit.
Is that the order, top of water elevation? Or which I'm at the bottom?
Top of water elevation.
Top of water elevation for the Detroit River. And so our 301 exemption does, like, the whole stretch where we're talking about right now, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what the cross-section is for sediment removal, because the ordinary high watermark of the Detroit River covers all of that, we cannot do work without a federal permit.
So what you were recalling earlier is, is to be able to do what's considered maintenance, is we're only allowed to reestablish that historical drain center line, but that ordinary high watermark will supersede us being able to do that maintenance in that area. So when we get above and beyond that, we can do that under, under the maintenance, under, or under the maintenance, under the maintenance drain code.
Because the federal, the federal permit won't be into play once we get past more upstream of the Detroit River ordinary high watermark.
And it stops at I-75?
It's right in between 75 and, and the railroad. And I mean, it's, and then at that point, we're, you're just skimming the top to be able to get above, to be able to get that sediment.
All right.
It's frustrating.
That was disappointing. I understand the drain code.
Yep, yep. And, and that isn't the drain code, and that's not even state law, that's federal law, that's Section 10 Waters, right? That's section, that's, that's the Clean Water Act. So that's not the drain code, that's not even Part 301 of NREPA at the state level. That's the feds waters of the state coming in off, off the Detroit River.
So let me say this again, with Mr. Kazoo coming up here and asking her some more questions, we have the federal that gets in there, we have the state that gets in there, and we have the county that gets in there, and we have the city that gets in there. So him trying to do his job, and me as a landowner trying to get, keep things clean, we might just, well, beat our heads against that brick wall, by the looks of what she's telling us, because everything you come up with, you come up with, we're, we're gonna hit federal, 'cause we can't go below. We hit, and we hit state because we can't go below. Now, I, I don't know where, you're saying, what was the date, 1890? Well, the creek wasn't even that way. That creek has been changed in the flow of it. It didn't run like it does now. How come they could change it then?
So there's been a number of regulations since this, how, what the landscape looks like now is very different from when this was established, what it was designed to handle. And, and if you read the reports and you look at some of your city's history, they were flood laden a century ago in this very same area. And so, um, what the county is trying to do is take the amount of money that we have and spend it as expeditiously as possible, and unfortunately, trying to get a federal permit, which is beyond any of our control, is not the most, best efficient use of the money for this part. But creating that maintenance lane will help. So you aren't gonna have a bigger straw, but you have a clean straw. So that's a start, and, and that's what, where we're at. And it's very frustrating for us, too, to not be able to do that type of work without federal permits. We're given some limited exemptions, and we're gonna utilize once we get back past that point, but we simply, we simply can't work where, where the federal government won't allow us to do it. So we share your frustration.
Is there a reason why you wanna even attempt to apply? I mean, I know it'll take a long time, but why not try for down the road?
The, the difficulty with the ARPA requirements are the deadlines by which you have to spend the money. So we have to have the majority of this work done by this time next fall. Um, we have definitely gone through permitting, uh, with the feds for other projects, and, you know, Ms. Hassan was not exaggerating when she said it would literally take months. So that would mean we would not be doing any work, and we have to start here first. So that means all the other reaches would be pushed back, and if we don't spend the money, the money's gone.
I, I, I didn't mean that to do what you're doing now, but why not look into getting a, a federal permit for something down the road, so if it happens, you are that much ahead of yourself?
Sure. So one of the requirements for the permit is you have to, along with submitting, obviously, the application, you have to say what the project is, when it's gonna start, when you're gonna do it. Um, you know, so at the time that if funding becomes available and we're able to do another project, you know, we, we start, without these time constraints, obviously, that are tied to ARPA, we absolutely can, can, can look into doing that, but we wouldn't be able to do, I think what you're asking is, could we just say, apply now for some unknown project in the future? Uh, because the permits would have, obviously, specific timeframes, and you have to submit plans, and, um, yeah.
Give it expiration dates.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I understand, I'm just saying, if, if you know that our, our drain diameter is too small to handle events, and you know that we're going to be looking in the future to enlarge that drain, you know, wouldn't it be kind of proactive to work on putting something together, even if we can't do it right now, to have a plan ready, to go when we find the funding to do that, instead of waiting to not have it together?
Right, that's an excellent question, and, um, I'm gonna give you, I'm a lawyer, so I'm gonna give you a legal answer. It's because it depends. Um, and so what I mean by that is, a permit for a cleanout, which we'd be pretty happy for, is much different than the permit if we were doing a major improvement project. And so they are very, very specific when issuing the permit, so we would certainly not want to expend our limited funds on trying to get a permit for something that's going to evolve into something different, and then all that work is basically thrown out. So what we tried to do with the money, and again, $10 million sounds like a lot, but when you have 16.3 miles of drain, it goes pretty quick. And so we looked at what would give us the best bang for our buck in terms of creating value that wasn't going to go away by creating this maintenance lane and take out the major obstructions, and then where possible, if permitting allows, to remove the sediment. And so, um, we hope we can make it all the way through the 16.3 miles with that amount of money, but, um, you get the first crack at it through your community, so, um, we'll see where we go.
Oh, I understand, I just, you know, it's disappointing when the DPS director says, you know, we, we want maintenance to get the sediment removed, and, and we can't, you know?
I know, his face was very disappointing.
I'm gonna get maintenance done, but we can only do so much maintenance, you know? So, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I, I just wanna, uh, expand on that 10 million. We're gonna start getting bids, and we're gonna get an idea of how far that 10 million's actually going to get us. So we're gonna do our best to use all of it and touch as many communities as we can with that $10 million. I mean, I may, we may get a bid where I have to start, like, there may be an option where sediment removal, to be able to get through this, might not be an option.
Anyway.
Just, anyway, to get through that 10 million, it may just be removing obstructions and clearing both banks as far as we can for future work. So we'll really know after this first reach, the kind of prices that we're getting, and then we all, I mean, and then winter work, and then it's gonna be next year's inflations and prices of getting that construction work for the Kinnear reaches. That's why we're trying to bid this and construct this as fast as possible to get it as, you know, as cost-effective as possible, like we're, like, wouldn't we, 300 million, you know, 12 years ago? It's not 300 million now, it's more than double that, and we know that. So that, you know, we're gonna do our best to spend as much of that and touch many communities as we can. Thank you, sir.
And so everybody remember, we will have all this information on our website as soon as we can. And with that, we'll try to adjourn again.
So there be no further discussion, this study session will adjourn at 7:02.